That's our heads. Our heavenly Father, we give you thanks for another wonderful day. Pray your blessings upon each one who comes this way and your watch carries safety and will go in and come tonight. That was followed to have the insight into the things that will be brought before us, dear God, that we might use it for the advantage of our folks here in Polk County. We ask this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I plead the allegiance to the United States of America, the universal republic for which it stands, one nation under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Greg Brooks.
Here.
Debbie Davis.
Here.
Daniel Deal.
He's here too.
Dewey Eskenot.
Here.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Jeremy Thimsey.
John Pipinger.
Here.
Samantha Trenton.
Here.
James Woody.
Here.
First on our agenda is approval of amendments of previous meetings.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Pipinger, second by Brooks. Any discussion? Roll call. Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
Dewey Eskenot.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trenton.
Yes.
And James Woody.
Yes.
Next on our agenda is approval of reports of office.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Pipinger, second by Evans. Any discussion? Roll call. Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
Dewey Eskenot.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trenton.
Yes.
And James Woody.
Yes.
Next on our agenda is budget or approval of notaries. We have three. Our first one is Janie McDonald. She works at Ameritrust Financial Services. Next is Joseph Anthony Kemper Sr. He works at Rachel's Chapel Congregational Holiness Church. And next is Joanne Patton. She works at Bradley K Richardson P.C.
I make a motion to approve the notice.
Second. Motion made by Brooks, second by Pipinger. Any discussion? Roll call. Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
Dewey Eskenot.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trenton.
Yes.
And James Woody.
Yes.
Next on our agenda is our budget amendments. We do have a few of those since we are closing up at the end of the year. We'll do General 101 first. The first one comes from clerk's office of 100. It comes from this proposed source of $100 over into proposed expenditures of 100. That is zero difference. Next is the litter grant. It comes from proposed source of 2,608 over into expenditures of 2,608 with zero difference. Next comes from the undesignated of 3,200 over into founding building maintenance of 3,200, zero difference. Airport maintenance of $1,171 over into airport improvement of $1,171. Next is proposed source of funds comes from the jail of $43,608.40 over into expenditure funds of $43,608.40. That's zero difference. This one is 4,800 over into maintenance and repair, 4,800 with zero difference. And the next one is 13,054.25 over into expenditures of 13,054.25 and there's zero difference. And then we have another one from the sheriff's department of $30,786.93. And that is going to be a zero difference over into expenditures of $30,786.93. And all of those are 101s.
Motion to approve 101 budget amendment.
Second. Motion made by Pipinger, second by Davis. Any discussion?
What number were you approving?
That will be 44 through 51. Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
Dewey Eskenot.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trenton.
Yes.
And James Woody.
Yes.
Next we got sanitation 116. The purpose source funds is $2,235 over into expenditures of $2,235 and there is zero difference in that one.
No, each capital has to have its own 131, 116, and one has to be separate. Motion to approve 116. That's the seventh budget amendment number 101.
Yes.
Second.
Motion made by Pipinger, second by Evans. Any discussion? Roll call. Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
Dewey Eskenot.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trenton.
Yes.
And James Woody.
Yes.
Next we got fund number 131. This is amendment 1-21. This is the road department. Their source funds is $146,000 over into expenditure funds of 146,000 and there's zero difference.
Motion to approve 131 budget amendment. Second one from the road department. The other one's another.
Second. Motion made by Pipinger, second by Davis. Any discussion? Roll call. Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
Dewey Eskenot.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trenton.
Yes.
And James Woody.
Yes.
Next one is 151 debt service amendment number two. The source of the funds is $200 over into expenditures of 200. There is zero difference in this one.
What department was that? What fund?
151 debt service. Amendment number two.
Says it's the fees for the annual debt payment.
It's coming out of the undesignated. Is this just where we have a?
They just got left over.
Left, okay. Okay.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion made by Woody, second by Deal. Any discussion? Roll call. Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
Dewey Eskenot.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trenton.
Yes.
And James Woody.
Yes.
Next we have 189. This is amendment number one. The source of the funds is $56,202 over into expenditure funds of $56,202 and it's zero difference.
That's some road funds.
Yeah, 189.
So it has to transfer on?
It's the capital project for car purchases.
For which purchase?
For the car purchase. If they have any leftover over, this is the end of the resolution, anything left over they have to give back.
Right.
They have to be brought up.
I make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion made by Woody, second by Evans. Any discussion? Roll call. Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
Dewey Eskenot.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trenton.
Yes.
And James Woody.
Yes.
Let me see that. Just approve. Yes.
Her first one is amendment number three, 20-21 budget. It says $84,532.11. Then we have budget or amendment number four and amendment number one. Four is out of fund 141. One is out of funds 177. It says the Polk County Board of Education is moving all money that is currently in fund 177 to fund 141. This has been an audit recommendation for the last three years. These remaining funds are from the building project of Copper Basin High School and remodeling of Copper Basin Elementary School. Fund 177 is now being used as the new 0.5 percent sales tax increase revenues for the construction of new schools.
It would've been nice if they told us how much it was.
Yeah, there's nothing on it.
Hold on.
It just looks like the account balance or the account numbers. Yeah, there's something. I don't have access to theirs. Everyone in the crowd is looking at me. This is not mine. There's no numbers on it.
I remember directly from school board meetings, I think it was like 11 or 19 thousand. But I can't guarantee that.
Yeah, maybe. They could've decided that too, but.
I make a motion to approve this budget amendment.
I'll say. Motion made by Woody, second by Deal. Any discussion?
What's the number three going to?
It doesn't say.
It's going to that big dark hole.
Yeah, it just gives you the amount that it is.
But where is it? I mean, it's not going anywhere.
No. It just kind of, that's what it is.
Our order of the calls coming out.
I don't know. I'm gonna send an email to print them out and hand them out. It's all over there.
This looks like something from Washington. They give you something inside here. Vote on it.
This looks like it. This looks like our money is coming in for the American recovery. It's about as generic as it is. Everybody's at their middle school graduation tonight, so.
They don't want to get ahead of what they're doing. Whether they tell us or not.
Colin Moore is asking, now that was coming from Polk County, did we vote on that?
Yeah, let's vote on it that way.
We know.
Yeah, let's do that.
Hey, we found part of that cut.
Well, we don't, this one, it just tells us where they're going. So we can't do that one, but we can take this one.
Did you get it safe, Woody?
Yes.
Roll call. Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
Dewey Eskenot.
I have to pass without more information.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
I'm gonna have to agree with Eskenot. Pass.
Samantha Trenton, pass. James Woody.
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five yes and three pass. Next on our agenda is the Ocoee Gateway Steering Committee.
We have Ms. Lindner Clary from the chamber going to introduce the Ocoee people for a short presentation.
Let me get something set up first. I apologize for logistics. There was another meeting and we couldn't get focused on the screen. For you commissioners, I apologize because you're gonna have to swivel or something. I'm gonna turn the projection on and then we'll see how the range is. We may have to adjust. We'd like to be as efficient as possible. We weren't able to test it before. Now, the question is, I can just as move them, but how can you all see that? I can stand back here and it's not ideal, but you have the wonderful visuals. Some of you want to move out.
We can see behind.
Can y'all see them? Should I turn it a little bit?
Nope.
No, we can do it.
Diane, could you try?
Don't turn the lights out for live.
Well, we're not gonna turn all the lights. Let me get focused.
It's bright.
I think that disappears.
Okay. Good evening. I'm here on behalf of the Polk County Chamber of Commerce tonight to introduce the Ocoee Gateway Committee presentation. This is a program that we, the Chamber of Commerce, do support and co-sponsor. The Steering Committee was formed in late 2019 to explore the Highway 64 corridor from Ocoee to Parksville as a potential gateway community. Branded as the Ocoee Gateway Community Initiative, the project does have the potential to significantly boost the economic base of Polk County. Chamber does support this committee's vision to create a West Polk County Tourism Corridor that conveys a sense of welcome and heritage while still supporting and promoting the diversity of the natural and cultural resources with development that reflects the land stewardship values important to all of us here in Polk County. The vision complements a similar goal of the Old Copper Road Preservation Alliance, which promotes the way from Duck Town to Cleveland through the Cherokee National Forest, showcasing the beauty of our natural resources and retaining the heritage that makes us Polk County. I'll now turn it back over to Sam Rogers, who is a member of the Ocoee Gateway Steering Committee. Many of you probably know Sam, who is a Polk County native and retired professor from the University of Tennessee Knoxville, where he served for 29 years on faculty. 2010 and 2011, he led graduate student classes in landscape architecture that studied approximately two square miles in the vicinity of Parksville as a hypothetical future gateway community along Highway 64 and the lower Ocoee River. He's also a property owner in the Ocoee Valley of land that has been in his family since 1861, so near and dear to his heart project.
Thank you, Lam. Good introduction. Can you try the lights? That helps? Like I said, I wish we had a larger screen, but maybe next time. Try to be as efficient as possible. We really appreciate the invitation for us being here through Commissioner Eskenot and also your hospitality for letting us present. We're not really asking for any money or action this evening, so just relax. And this is for your awareness. Before I get into the slides, I would like to acknowledge our committee members. It is a very impressive committee. Tom Darden is chairman, but he couldn't be here this evening. He had to be in Atlanta. But he is a retired natural resources professional as well as Mary Ann Packard, and they live on Chestnut Mountain near Fairview and Reliance, I believe. We do have here Bob Bryant and Marie Bryant, retired educators from Polk County. They live in Ocoee. Also Sherri Kepsell, also of Ocoee, who's on the Industrial and Economic Development Board as well, Sherri. Andrea Lambert has been serving because we started this in 2019 when she was with the chamber, but she's now with Tennessee Overhill. And of course, we have Lam McClary, who's been very active and helpful and supportive in what we're trying to do as director of Polk County Chamber of Commerce. And we also have Dana Teasley here, who's roots are in Polk County, and she's with the Old Copper Road Preservation Alliance as their director. And that group does impressive work. So if we get into the slides then, our objectives really this evening are to provide an overview of our resources. Now, y'all are very familiar with our resources. We developed this in case some folks are not, but we want to raise your awareness of what we're doing in the way of a gateway initiative to discuss concepts and benefits, provide an outline of our next steps, and to seek your input as this moves forward. By the way, we have already presented to the Industrial and Economic Development Board last September, I believe. They were very positive. We didn't ask them for any action. We've also had two separate meetings with property owners, some from the river, Lower Ocoee River east to the mountains, and the other from Ocoee to the Lower Ocoee River Bridge there. So we've had two meetings. We've not had any negative reactions, and we're still trying to reach out to the property owners. When we talk about a gateway community, of course, what is a gateway community? It's defined as a community that borders publicly owned land, such as a national or state park or forest, often struggling to balance the need for economic growth with the desire to protect its natural resources, landscapes, and cultural heritage. Estes Park, Colorado, an example. It's the gateway to the Rocky Mountains National Park. Now, our committee came up with these categories. Notice the dollar signs there on the left. Can y'all see that okay? We started looking at this and we came up with these classifications. One would be a pass-through or stop-and-go seasonal activity, minimal economic base. The example would be Ocoee, Parksville, and Polk County. We already have a gateway community, but we're not capturing the revenues there that we should and deserve. Secondly, a slowed-down, lingered, extended season activity would be a modest economic base. The example is towns in Tennessee. Finally, with all those dollar signs in Sevier County, stay awhile destination, year-round activity, examples are Gatlinburg and Pigeon Forge. Do we want to be a Pigeon Forge? Most of you would probably say no, but we'd like that revenue, right? I'm old enough to know, when I graduated from the University of Tennessee in 1970, we had a little social, art mill social at the Green Valley Restaurant in Pigeon Forge. That was about all that was there, you know, 50 years ago. So we see there are growing pains and we see that things change, but it is a very big challenge. We know also that the world, Kansas, Polk County, the Ocoee River, Yang River, no drive to 1996, it's the 25th anniversary, I believe, this year. But we thought it would be a big change in our economic base, but unfortunately, we gave no drive to. But all that revenue that we expected, some of it has not really been realized. A lot of potential there. So why does this Ocoee-Parksville corridor have significant potential as a gateway community? Google Earth, it's outstanding to see the geography of that corridor. Just see the setting. Big Frog Mountain in the background, Sugarloaf, and Little Mountain framing Highway 64 as it crosses the Lower Ocoee River. So it's this key location, it's obvious. Very few communities would have the opportunity that we have. It could be a west portal gateway through Cherokee National Forest, Lake Ocoee, and the Ocoee River Rapids. Now, I'm gonna flip through these pretty quickly because you know, but these are some of our resources already. Outstanding setting and visual character, rural tradition and open space fabric, unique sense of place, our nation's first scenic byway, by the way, and one of my, probably my favorite place, and probably your favorite place, the overlook until Howie Mountain to Sugarloaf and Lake Ocoee. We also have established adventure tourism reputation. Ocoee is the most visited whitewater river in the United States. That's me in the front of that raft, by the way, and Bob Bryant is in the back as a guide for Cherokee rafting a few years ago. And this Old Copper Road has such a storyline. And Dana, I've worked with some of that committee as well. We found some mapping that shows what it would be like in 1800s before Lake Ocoee became impounded. So this is the original raft, and it can be traced and overwheeled today. And there are remnants still there that some of you are unaware of. And of course, we're so proud of our historical heritage. It dates back to the time of the Cherokee Indians, of course, with the Cherokee removal and Polk County being formed as a direct result of the removal, which was, I think, tragic in American history. Also, we still have a pioneer farmstead. My great-great grandfather, that was his farmstead. John Rains owns it now, but Jesse Breimer owned it. He was a copper hauler and a farmer and a merchant. Also, the storyline of the hydroelectric history legacy. Remember when the diversion dams looked like it did on the left? And my father worked on the Ocoee Number Two dam in Bloom, and that's where, that's why I grew up in Polk County primarily. My family, we were all coming back to our roots, my mother and father both. The scenic Lower Ocoee River is not as well-known, but it's become more popular and more crowded for tubing and enjoyment like Wealthy Valley Village, such a great tradition of lot of rural and rustic lodging on the Lower Ocoee River. And of course, one of our favorite places, of course, is the Ocoee Dam Deli in Dana, frequently going there or carrying that. And even my cousin Joe Fettson, I don't think he's here, but he also owns land that's been the family since 1861. And that is changing because of the new bridge, but unfortunately, I think it's going to be continued even though. be continued even though it has been impacted. A great agritourism venue. Past planning exercises and reports include some work in the Copper Hill and Copper Basin area. You commanders from that area are probably more aware of what's going on there and have set a good example by reaching out to the University of Georgia, who did some studies. We all know Corridor K has been talked about and studied for 50 years probably. And then more recently, a tourism plan for Polk County, Tennessee, done in about 2017, I believe. I don't know whether you remember, but I was in the middle of this with Joe Fetzer and others. And we formed a group in the 1990s primarily in response to the change that we thought was happening because of the Olympics coming to Polk County. But Ingrid and Cheryl Bueller and Randy Bueller, they offered so many positive comments about what we were trying to do. We had a group, the University of Georgia came up and studied the area. Then these are my students. I'm there, one of the studio classes of 10. We had one in the spring of 2010 and one in 2011, and I was their studio faculty leader. We had permission from all the property owners in that vicinity. Now, we just studied east of the river to the Cherokee National Forest, but this enriched the students so much and gave us so many good ideas, and you'll see their impressive work. There they are in the lower right in the Architecture Building, University of Tennessee, where we had the studio, but we visited one or two weekends in Polk County, as you see in the field there. This is what it takes to professionally create a product, what we call a visioning. First of all, is the site analysis. They did wonderful mapping, academic reports. It was all hypothetical, but I think it allowed us to dream. Sorry you can't see what's going on here, nor do we have time to explain it. Sherri's always a little frustrated that we can't enlarge that, but just take my word. There are wonderful ideas there. There was even a master's thesis done in 2011, about a 300-page report about this study by one of the students who took the class. We almost eliminated this slide for the sake of time, and I'm not going to go through all these ideas. There are 13 bullets there, but if you took these ideas, they're on this one slide, and we implemented most of those or all of them, we would have something that would be entirely unique as a gateway community, be an alternative to Pigeon Forge, and then we would still boost our economy tremendously. These are the present and future challenges. One is dealing with change, and I added that comma, which has already begun, by the way, because when property is sold, change starts happening, and in some cases, it's good. In some cases, you might see something that you would like to see done in a different way. So we do have economic growth opportunities, but how do we conserve this sense of place, which is so powerful? How do we maintain a connection to the Lower Ocoee River and its rural character without spoiling? So visioning for the future is important. This is for Commissioner Brooks. Why visioning and not zoning? We had a long talk about this. We favor voluntary efforts, believe it or not, to see how we can work together. Visioning is a trend trending as a collective participation process undertaken by communities across the country. Visioning focuses on the unique resources of place. Visioning often relies on master planning of properties for mixed use, not single-use restrictions, often associated with zoning. And visioning can foster creativity while traditional zoning can be less creative and cumbersome. And I live in a town with a lot of zoning. It's a great bureaucracy. But if we can do something without going through that, it would be incredible. These are some examples. On the left is conventional development. On the right, it's what we call creative development, taking the same place and just manipulating it from a creative visioning process. The same here. I've used this term with Robbie Hatchard before. Robbie's not here, is he? I am concerned that Polk County is being sliced and diced. I guess that's a term I use. Sliced and diced, very little master planning is going on, as it is in many parts of the country. So we need, instead of slicing and dicing our land, let's creatively look at the potential. There's all kinds of visualization. Programs of professionals that can help do that to come up with something more life on the right, gain economic advantage, have a unique sense of place to serve. These are the things we need to do. Extend this tourism season by offering more visitor activities, such as music, wedding, and gathering venues and festivals. Develop a major welcome visitor or heritage center. Establish a Lower Ocoee River greenway and riverwalk. Establish additional lodging, eating, shopping, and service opportunities as demand increases. Increase revenue opportunities, thus reducing revenue leakage to adjoining counties. Do y'all identify with that term? We're leaking revenue to adjoining counties. So that's a key term, leakage. Okay? Current planning efforts. Polk County Chamber of Commerce, of course, is helping, has co-sponsored through us, and we are only a voluntary committee, by the way. We're not funded, but we hope we're doing something important. And we are grassroots locally. We're not being told that we have to do something from somewhere above. So we're the Ocoee Gateway Community Steering Committee, and also working closely with the Old Copper Road Preservation Alliance that preceded our organization. So how do we do this? First, we try to seek professional planning assistance. That's where we're going to be trying to go after some grants and partnerships. Building awareness and common vision of property owners and other interested supporters. Building strategic community and agency partnerships. But we're finding that when we talk to T-Dot or some of the foundations, Chattanooga or TBA, they're saying, well, what do the community leaders think about this? So that's why we're here. We want you to be aware of kind of some of the homework that we do. And we're going to help provide guidance for enhancing the corridor through voluntary actions. Notice that term, voluntary actions. And seek development partners and conservation partners. One without the other may not be successful. When we met with property owners, these were the things that we were asking, and I'm not going to itemize those so much. The first, involvement and participation. I've transferred here. What are we asking of the county commission this evening? One, we'd like your involvement and participation. Most of all, we'd like your moral support, or your, what we interpret as political support with an asterisk there. Political support, as the Ocoee Gateway Committee reaches out to potential funding and agency partners for vision assistance. The footnote there is, though we are not asking for direct funding support, the political support of the county executive and county commission will be invaluable. Invaluable means extremely valuable. Additional thoughts. The COVID pandemic has revealed an extraordinary preference for tourism, outings and gatherings, wedding to outdoor places, venues, experiences, and activities. In addition to the Ocoee River Bridge replacement, other engineering improvements to US Highway 64 are being planned east of the river crossing with a revival of the Appalachian Corridor K project along the existing route. I don't know how many of y'all are aware of that, but it's happening. Underlined, urgency for visioning is now to influence the future growth character of the Ocoee Gateway Corridor. And unlike 25 years ago, I think now it is more and more urgent. It's either now or never. The time print shows some wonderful acknowledgements of students and information in our committee and our presentation and our photos. And we'd like to thank you, the rainbow over Sugarloaf Mountain there on our, actually my property there in Long Highway 64. Thank you for this opportunity. We invite your questions and discussion, though you may not have time, but we have time. It's up to you. We appreciate it being here. Hope you enjoyed this brief presentation. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions, Cory?
Okay, I might say one more thing. I remember commissioners Pimperger and Brooks, were quoted in Polk County News. They had so much support for what we were trying to do, but there might have been some skepticism as to how can we do this? Can we really pull this off? And that's the question, because I think we're ideally have a good idea. And the big question is, can we bow to skepticism, or can we all work together and get busy and do this, no matter what it takes for this county? Thank you.
Roger, can I ask a question? I apologize, I'm going to go down.
I think one of the biggest questions in the past was, is it the option of the property owner? That was one of the big, because it mirrored image at the time of zoning. And as long as it's the option of the property owner, I support it fully, but it's got to be their option.
Right, and I think more details will come along, and I appreciate that. That's a very good question, but I think all along, none of us thought that property owners themselves, maybe, they don't have the capital resources to actually develop in a big way the multi-million dollars it takes to invest. But if we have a vision, we might match a developer with a property owner or a conservationist with a property owner. There are certain advantages sometimes to leave some of this bottom land as open space or agricultural open space. I would really hate to see that we lose the agricultural use of our bottom lands, but wouldn't it be nice to lodge and look out on those open spaces and have a trail along the river? And I was involved in Chattanooga, first pioneered the idea of their greenway system, by the way, in 1970. Look what that's done for Chattanooga. You got a question?
Observationally, back when the Olympics were in the planning stage, there was a guy named Ed Ray McQuarrie who came through and to see that photograph. He put the photo of himself coming down the Ocoee with the Cherokee raft in the area. He was on the right front. I was on the left front. We had the scenic rivers, glass coast, and we had a member of the Sierra Club and a couple of county officials. Ed Ray thought that the best approach which could accomplish the visioning was the formation of, he referred to as the Ocoee River Authority, which would then, there would be a legislative development of the vision, the vision, which many people had, and it met with much skepticism at the time. And he somewhat abandoned that because there was no support for that type of approach. And the limitations that would be present within a visioning authority, if you will, are not going to be met with any support in other aspects of our authority. So it really takes a big, long vision of the Ocoee River Corridor, which we've talked about since the 70s as well. But that, I think, everybody talks about zoning. We don't want to make a special area. There is a special area in this community. There are a lot of special areas, different areas. And so the question is going to be, does the community decide to support that kind of visioning enclave, if you will, to promote the utilization of those different communities in a way that would be different from what might be present at other areas? Now, those are really heavy and weighty questions, as you know. And there are many of us who have been appreciative of what the potential is, and the question always is, are we going to begin the steps necessary to make it successful? And thank you for the tribute and the tendency to do that.
Appreciate your comments, and I would like to point out that we're not proposing any authority at all. We'd like to get some grant funding or whatever to develop a visioning process that takes it to another level. The students did wonderful work. Remember, they spent one semester, and they were, they're now, those same students are out there winning awards across the country, for that matter, in landscape architecture. But then they were kind of green, went behind the gears, so to speak. Their work's impressive, but we need to take it to another level, and that's all we're proposing, is let's get a professional study to come in and help and guide us. And that's what we're going to go after, and I know the Old Copper Road Alliance is going to overlap some, and they're going after some similar corridors management studies and whatnot. Thank you.
Have you, I know last time, there was strong opposition to it from the landowners. You know, they're, and now, you know, since J.T. sold out, we've got even more landowners than we did last time. You know, we've added 15 when there was one. Has that changed then? Is there add to you?
Well, unfortunately, some of the land has changed hands since we even met last fall, and we haven't fully integrated. We don't, we didn't have any great opposition to what we were doing before, by the way. At a lot of meetings at Zion Church and other places, there was no opposition necessarily. It was just that some people were apathetic and may not have participated. That's the thing. So we just have to keep cultivating it. We can't say that we have 100% on board, but we had major property owners that were all in, and we lost some of those folks. Unfortunately, like David Humber, who we lost too bad, too soon, and some folks like that. Properties change hands, and so we recognize that generation.
When you develop a community with a piece of property, does that property, I mean, is it filed from the property owner to develop? Or is it developed that he still has any type of control?
It can work in many different ways, and sometimes the property owner might maintain what's called equity in the development, and lawyer Logan could probably tell more, tell us more about that. But on the other hand, just imagine if some people are willing to sell. We have a Century Farm designation, so I hate to sell, but if it were, if the legacy was to go into something like this, then I would be more willing to sell and take my equity and just say, this is for the future. So it works both ways. We might have run out of time, but I'm willing to answer more questions.
I'd say we'll be.
Thanks for your enthusiastic question, and we look forward to maybe coming back again sometime and give you a little coverage. Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda is the Duck Town Interlocal Agreement. It's only by Evans.
As far as I know, they hadn't signed the paper or mailed no check on it. I think that's what the judge told them to do. Is that correct?
Let me maybe respond to that observation. Keith Grant, representing the city of Duck Town, filed the lawsuit against us seeking a temporary injunction from the resulting from the resolution which had been passed, and I think last month or month before last, it was in April, I think.
it was enabled, I think, that that provision was passed to terminate services from the city of Duck Town to the convenience center. That began, and the city of Duck Town did not agree to sign the contract again. There is only one clause which they mentioned in their pleadings, and that is paragraph eight, which they assumed that the county was at some time going to make a termination at your women capri. And what I told the chancellor is, all contracts have a duty of good faith in the performance of the contracts, and there's no reasonable enforcement where that you would just say, well, we don't like the folks that are on the council now. It would have to be a reasonable basis for terminating the relationship with Duck Town's service to their residents. We are now set for trial. The chancellor said, I'm going to expedite this. We will try this case in June, first full week in June. And we are set for trial. Today, they served on the mayor a request for production, open records request, for over 10 years of detailed records. Guess who has all those records? It is not the county executive. It's not the mayor.
The county clerk.
It's the county clerk. So someday, they might recognize, or their council will recognize that that request for production of documents is not going to be, it'll be responded to appropriately. They have the gun to pay, but only began to pay commencing a week before last, June.
I don't know. I never did hear.
Yes.
No back pay from January?
No back pay from January, though we had submitted competing orders, because I said that the chancellor said, beginning January the 1st, which was after they passed three to zero, an agreement to enter into the contract. But there was a discussion in that meeting that there would be some amendment to paragraph eight. So what we got is, we've got a very difficult situation for you. I don't want to talk necessarily the strategy, though as most of you, I don't have any secrets when it comes to litigation. However, there are a couple of things that have been mentioned, which are not within the complaint as a theory. The approach that has been discussed, and I'm going to just go ahead and share it, is that they are going to attempt to say that it violates, for the first time in the history of the state of Tennessee, where there are lots of communities which have these agreements, they're going to suggest that Pope County is double taxation violation of a provision of the Tennessee Constitution. There's no authority for it in case law. The statute, which has been passed by the legislature, says that any county can impose a reasonable fee, and they have no quarrel as to the reasonliness of the fee. In fact, the deliveries which they have made to another facility, when we suspended, cost them a lot more money than it would have been for them to have complied, signed the contract, proceeded under the fee that had been assessed. So it's a, it's really, I should express to the other people, and I'd love to speak to the council members, but I can't because they've got a lawyer. It's what it is. We're all in this together, and the legislature has said that counties should be able to impose a fee on delivery from the convenience center plan, which they have. So that's where it is. Now, they are now paying the assessment we've made, but have not voluntarily paid or delivered that check, which was.
And it's still not signed?
Not signed, no.
What is injunction good to what, June 8th?
That's correct.
I make a motion to spend 30 more days of Hector June than that.
I would, I know the zealous nature and the love of the Pope County that.
Well, it's just that something in place. It's, we'll have a meeting between now and then, just in case.
Well, I think that if she feels that she will maintain, if she decides against us, that she will maintain the temporary restraining order in place. So I think that her determination of the validity of that issue were to rule favorably to them as we appealed would be a very difficult decision.
Well, I would draw my motion to the, we'll look at it again at July meeting. And I would like to recognize Doug Collins. He made his, as a citizen of this county, not only has he sued every citizen of Pope County, and every citizen in the city of Duck Town, he's probably the first person in history to ever sue himself. So I think that's quite an accomplishment. And he has successfully done that. I think he needs recognized for.
Anyone who predicts with certainty the outcome of the case is an idiot, but I certainly don't want to come here with a face as red, as these two reds that I see, two of your county commissioners wearing.
Mr. Logan, I do have one clarification. In a nutshell, section eight said, if you don't pay the cost, Pope will not let you dump.
But it will still, it adds that it will still be available for all.
To all the citizens.
To all the citizens.
But the city, who's picking up the trash and paid for it by city tax, if they don't pay the amount, then the county doesn't let them dump. And that's the one they had the problem with.
That's correct, but the actual amendment which was proposed by the county attorney and the city attorney, being one of the same person, apparently was not presented to the bodies as the actual change which was announced in the city council meeting, which is recorded.
As far as the change, you know, Cochran Hill went along with it, Mitten went along with it. They didn't ask for no change. So our position is, once we do it for them, and I don't think they can even force us to. So we'll find out what June 8th.
June 8th, we will find.
I'll draw my motion to the July meeting.
Injunction, that just suspended us.
That suspended us not allowing.
So if the judge rules not favorable, it automatically reinstates?
That's.
To finish out the 30 days?
Yeah, they just served seven days of it. They still have 23 days to serve on suspension.
Yeah, and you could enforce that, but the question is, is whether or not the citizens of Pope County who are, as you said, citizens of, I mean, citizens of Duck Town, the imposition of the greater cost to them to remove the picked up solid waste is something that you might wish to consider.
Oh, they got the money, Duck Town. They ain't going to make their citizen taxes go up if they take it for three more weeks to Georgia.
Thank you for withdrawing it, Commissioner Brooks.
For July anyway, wherever you visit.
I've said this before, there are two other bits of litigation that are going on, which involve Pope County, and there's nobody who works hard on those matters, turns talking to state officials, getting information, as you know, of John Pivenger. And there's nobody who calls me more often than John Pivenger.
Now, when he turns his bill in, that don't help if you turn your bill in. It's a bill blower than nothing.
Thank you for getting such a date on that.
Thank you very much. If anybody has any specific questions, I'm happy to take those questions. I think that I probably should bring up a date, and I'm going to go ahead and say this out of order. Thank you very much. We do have now two lawsuits against the Pope County Beer Board.
Yes, John.
But at those cases, there's going to be a summary judgment hearing toward the end of June. I can't remember the specific date, in which we will be trying to get a summary judgment on those two. There are really fascinating legal issues involved in which result from the rejection of the application by someone who was well within the 2,000-foot rule. And there are statements, and those you'd be interested, perhaps some reading of those pleadings, I'll send you, as I have in the past, copies of those if you would like. The O.G.A. litigation was dismissed, and the state court, as I told you, was going to have the hearing on Friday following our meeting. But we are still in negotiations in the multi-district litigation, attempting to have an increase in the funds. It's already been raised about 2.4 million once, and we've got additional 800,000 that's coming through the Attorney General's office. And now the question is the distribution of those funds. Thank you.
Next, we have county property, the Cheek House by Brooks.
I don't think James, Super Ten, has got back with it. Architect's going to give us information on it. I'll contact everybody when he does. I want a building commission, and we'll all meet out there.
I asked for the information the day after we had our.
It's been three months. We'll get an answer on that. Build a commission, whoever's red, we'll be out there and walk over and see, and see what we'll do with the house. Make a final decision. Well, we'll get on, we'll put it off. The house ain't getting no better than what we're saying. So as we're here for James, we'll have a build a committee meeting and look it over. I think the architect's supposed to give us this on the dirt, how much stuff we need, and give us a couple of options. So you heard nothing about John O'Gorman?
Nope. I was asking about that at the Chattanooga meeting with Architect a couple of years ago, and explaining that we was going to need that, because at that point in time, the house was in good shape.
Correct.
And that was supposed to be put on Phase One of the study. I think Phase One's done, and Phase Two or Three, and it's still not done. So.
I'll contact Build a Committee. I'll call James back in the morning, see if he can get an answer on that.
Next is our Health Department, People Helping People donations.
No, that's.
That'll be.
Health Department has 20 plastic chairs.
Yeah.
They want to give to People Helping People, donate it.
Yeah.
A kindergarten table they want to donate to the, I believe that elementary. That's all that is.
247 brown metal chairs.
There won't have to declare a surplus, Ray. They say there's no further use or value in the chairs than the holding.
Correct. Robbie was going to bring them up here to the courthouse, but he didn't know. We're not bringing that junk here.
Yeah, give it to whoever wants to give it, give it, give it.
It's listed on that list, isn't it? Yeah. I make a motion that we consider that property surplus is listed.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Pivenger, second by Escanot.
Just the addition that the county executive has a power to disperse where the property has been listed. You're out with that on the.
Yes.
Both sides, right.
Brokaw. Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
Dewey Escanot.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
John Pivenger.
Yes.
Samantha Trenton.
Yes.
And James Woody.
Yes.
Okay, next on our agenda is the Resolution for Redistricting Committee.
Yep. Resolution number 5121?
Yes.
Whereas Tennessee Code Annotated Section 5-1-111 requires that at least every 10 years, county legislative bodies should change the boundaries of county legislative districts, so that members represent substantially equal populations. And whereas Pope County Legislative Body finds it to be in the best interest of Pope County to establish a redistricting committee to assist Pope County, to assist the Pope County Legislative Body with the necessary boundaries, changes the county legislative district, so that members represent substantially equal population. Now therefore be resolved by the Pope County Legislative Body meeting the 25th day of May 2021, that Section 1, Pope County Legislative Body does hereby establish a redistricting committee to prepare suggested redistricting plans to be presented to and voted on by the entire Pope County Legislative Body. Section 2, the redistricting committee. Does she inform?
Yeah.
Section 2, the redistricting committee shall assist the following members, District 1, John Pivenger, District 2, Greg Brooks, District 3, Samantha Trenton. The committee may assist to as many members as the commission desires due to the impact of redistricting on voting precincts. It's recommended that the committee include administrator elections. Section 3, at the first meeting, the redistricting committee shall elect chairman, vice chairman, and secretary. Section 4, meeting, the redistricting committee shall be subject to the open meetings provision, TCA Title B, Chapter 44. The secretary of the redistricting committee shall prepare the minutes of each meeting. Section 5, the redistricting committee shall meet from time to time as necessary in order to prepare suggested redistricting plans. The chair of the redistricting committee shall report to the Pope County Legislative Body at each regular meeting of the Pope County Legislative Body on the status of suggested redistricting plans. This will be adopted the 25th day of May 2021, on passage.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 5121.
Nathan will be on it?
That was recommendation.
Yeah.
Ruston's side administrator on that. Yeah.
Yeah, it says, including the administrator of elections.
Any bail process commission will be on?
Who, who on the side, you read 120, who was, who was that two?
You were first.
First, that's all makes district, any bails wants to be on.
Took training on it.
Yep.
I put you out to district, please.
Yep.
And you want to nod. So is that four?
That's four.
Nathan's not considered a voting member, is he? I don't, I don't think he has the power to vote on that. He's ex-martini. But I don't think in your position, you have. I wouldn't want to be a voting member.
2010, the election administrator wasn't a voting member.
Nope.
But he did have, he did give information that the committee needed.
No, he's not a voting. But he has to make coffee before ever.
But this, this is a committee, just brings it to the county commission, full commission to have a vote.
All right. Motion made by Pivenger, second by Deal. Any discussion?
Brokaw.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
Dewey Escanots.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
John Pivenger.
Yes.
Samantha Trenton.
Yes.
And James Woody.
Yes.
Next on our agenda is the Airport Lease Review.
County Executive Patrick asked me to look into this issue, and the reason is because of budgetary processes which are taking place at the federal level and state level regarding airport funds and potential for designation of funds to come to rural airports. I reviewed the proposed revised lease. I do not find that the kind that I would recommend that you engage in, because it has no, it has a 30-year plan that all of the same factors which are. to meet week after next to discuss the provisions. What I don't want is anybody to assume that I am taking any authority which has not yet been granted or directions from me to negotiate what I believe is a better lease for both Pope County and for the airport, Martin Campbell, and for the airport manager. I do not know if you know or not, but he's married to a four-star general who was just approved and recommended by the president, approved by the advisory committee on the appointments. She will be given a, be appointed to a position of great authority in our military service. She's already a four-star general. A lot of folks don't know, we've got a four-star general who resigned around here in Pope County, Tennessee. But he was very kind in our discussions and amenable to the suggestions which I had made that needed to be changed to the lease. So that's, that's why County Executive Hatcher asked me to appear to discuss that matter with you and take your direction to negotiate a revised lease, which as I understand it, Mr. Brooks had not provided that to you, as I understand it, is that correct?
Attorney Brooks, yeah.
Nobody tells you this.
Attorney Eric Brooks.
We, we had sent him out to do that, and I don't know what happened. There were some different circumstances that it was never done, it was never presented back to us.
That, that's my, my understanding, and, and talking to him very briefly back, the first was brought to my attention, that it had not been done because most, most of us believed that there were going to be some significant airport improvement. You've already reached your maximum limit there, so I don't think that's going to.
I make a motion to authorize Attorney Logan to act on county's behalf to negotiate a, a contract on the airport lease for Pope County Airport.
And it'd be submitted back to you for approval.
Motion made by Pippen, second by Esquinox, any discussion?
Just one thing now, any monies that come out of such lease with an airport by state law are directed back for improvements, repair, and rehabilitation of such airport project.
That is correct.
So even though if we get, but it, it goes back into, to increasing improvement.
That's correct.
That's what I thought.
The question of the activity and the projected activity is a very important factor to go into such a lease agreement. It comes with necessity for change and some, and granting some authority for utilization of additional income which comes in as a matter that's not addressed in the contract now.
Brokaw. Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
Dewey Esquonot.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
John Pippen.
Yes.
Samantha Trantham.
Yes.
James Woody. Next on our agenda is bids on RFPs for the health department windows. It looks like we have two. I was turned in Coleman's Glass of seven thousand eight hundred fifty-five dollars and phase one construction, twenty-two thousand six hundred seventy-five dollars and twenty-nine cents.
I like that cheap one. Somebody make a motion, because I'm, I'm afraid to, I think the, the carpet. Deal, I'm afraid I'll get the wrong numbers.
I make a motion to go with, with Coleman Glass Company for seven thousand eight hundred fifty-five dollars.
You sure that never goes with that knife?
Yep.
I'm looking at it. Yes, it does.
I know. We were looking at it that night, too.
I like that you.
Motion made by Brooks, second by Evans, any discussion? Brokaw. Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
Dewey Esquonot.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
John Pippen.
Yes.
Samantha Trantham.
Yes.
James Woody. Next on our agenda is our planning commission. We have a recommendation from the county executive for the planning commission, be Mark Whortley.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Esquinox, second by Deal, any discussion?
Brokaw.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
Dewey Esquonot.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
John Pippen.
Yes.
Samantha Trantham.
Yes.
James Woody. Next on our agenda is Sharp, Federal Labor Commissioner Davis.
We've got the lady from Sharp with us tonight, Ms. Griffin.
Yes. And Ms. Sharon is going to present our information, and I'd like to give everybody a little handout. So we just wanted to thank county commissions for your donation last year, and we just put those information, we had a matching grant, so we were, we put that money all towards spay and neuter of Pope County citizens and animals. We put that information in there for you. As you know, we're a nonprofit, all volunteer group. We're not big enough, we get calls all day, every day. If I had the help, we'd probably just take an eight hundred out, but we just don't. About ten of us that do all this work. So the good news is Maggie secured a grant this year for ten thousand dollars from the Bob Barker Foundation, and that's gonna go to Pope County citizens only for spay and neuter of any dogs. So if you have anybody in your area, have them contact our number, and they will get a free spay and neuter and a baby shot through Dixie Day Bay in Cleveland. So we're always out there looking for ways to help. We have other programs, and we're donating food bags, and I think we donated over ten thousand pounds of food to needy families slash here at Dog House Straw, anything we can do, we're, we're everywhere, and we use volunteers. For sure. There's way too many, but just by today, when we're looking at our records, we've issued fourteen hundred and eighty-three vouchers for Pope County residents, I'm already a figure on average of these dog, we're talking, we've eliminated several thousand dollars from the county already. So we're out there doing the work, we use volunteers, and anything you guys can ever donate to us, or the three hundred, we'll find a matching grant and look for your, for your. And we get all three areas, one to one three. We really appreciate it.
All right, we appreciate everything you're doing. I'm a dog lover, and I, if I can give you hype in our budget, I just do. But county, so, but anyway, we do appreciate your work, and I will, you know, we'll always do anything we can and pass the word around for volunteers and get it out there.
There's no way we can afford a, a building, so we're our foster base, so that means when we take in a stray.
Yeah.
It's gotta go to somebody's house, and they're totally vetted, they're spay and neuter, all their shots are done in the microchip before we even adopt out. And believe it or not, ninety-five percent of the animals we take in are adopted out of state. Most, most of our animals go to homes, where we've interviewed people in Michigan, New York, Pennsylvania, Maryland, Delaware, they're going out of state, they're going away, and we get pictures and emails back for ten years, hey, we adopted this dog from me, this little Pope County mutt that someone threw out on the road, so.
Right.
And they get great homes, and we put a lot of time and money into each individual animal.
I know, I'd give anything if we could afford, just a small shelter, you know, I wish we could shelter a few dogs instead of inmates.
Any fifty dollars you can donate, we'll spay and neuter a, a dog, so we really appreciate it.
All right, well, thank you all.
We also have a, it's from the Pope County Road Department, it's their annual bids. It says, please allow this letter to serve as verification of Pope County Road Department annual bids for twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two with the following descriptions. Accepting bids for advertising items are guardrails, road stripings, and petroleum products. Advertised items that are required for rebid, guardrail, road stripings, and petroleum products.
Hey, Chris, where you at? Boggs, you wanna give us a, that's where, you wanna give us a quick update on what's going on with the ambulance service? I will say this.
I mean, I don't want to spot or.
No, no, we wouldn't do that, but I, I want to say this before you get started, just for the record, the last six weeks?
Mm-hmm.
I thought I had those calls.
Good. It was face good on our end for running the third, you know, the third truck like what we discussed. There was a couple of days during the fuel situation, a week or two ago, that I did not send the truck up to Duck Town. It's kinda happened anyway, that all the calls those few days were down here, so it kinda worked out. We did have to work out with Robbie and with EMA a plan to be able to get fuel if we needed, because we get it at the gas stations like everybody else. With all the stations that were running out of gas, they were there too, and the way everybody was crowded, we didn't know, but we had a backup plan. The EMA would have, you know, covered the costs, we would have got it from the county, but we also had the Circle K's in Benton and Duck Town did assure us that, or their district manager, that they had a reserve, and that we would have been able to access that. We never did have to, but other than that, things, business as usual, and we're, we're good.
Any questions? Appreciate it.
Is anybody having any announcements or statements?
I do. Couple of times been mentioned, County Executive Hatcher, I, I should have brought this up at a personal meeting, to make it clear, the reason he's not here tonight, he has a child that is graduating, Chohag Middle School, tonight, along with some of her friends, and I think they've got a pretty long tonight scheduled, planned for them after the graduations that are out of trees.
Yeah, Steve Happ in Texas for that.
Okay, so that, that is, I'm sure he is, but that is the reason that he was not able to be here tonight.
And there was a box of goodies put on the table tonight, I think that they threw.
His kids graduating middle school.
This so happens, I was sitting close to me. Pennsylvania.
Anybody got anything else?
The lease agreement that I handed out before the meeting was just from Robbie to look at, it'll be on next month's agenda, but he was telling y'all to have it in your hands to look at it before the.
You entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.